Okay, Commissioners, I'm just going to note for the record before we get to the last item that items number six through 11 and 25 are being read into the record and will be presented either August 5th or August 12th. And the last item for today is item number 32, application for certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, docket number 15-9134, block 1227, lot 27, 203 to 209 West 79th Street in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. A group of four row houses originally built in 1896 to 97 and combined into one apartment building with a new modern style facade designed by Joseph Feingold in 1972 to 74. This is an application to demolish the existing building and construct a new building.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Rebecca Salgado, Preservation Department staff. The subject property is on the north side of the street between Amsterdam and Broadway. This is a view of the existing building on the site. The applicant proposes to demolish this building and replace it with a new building. Here's some views of the back of the existing building and the entrance and ground floor of the existing building. So the current building was originally built in 1896 as four row houses. And then in the 1970s, those four row houses were converted to an apartment building with an expanded footprint and a new facade. Here you can see some photos of context.
Sorry, could I just ask something?
Sure.
A new facade?
A new facade.
All new materials?
Yes.
Can't hear about the microphone.
Sorry.
I asked if there were all new materials.
So here's some context photos taken in the historic district showing the mixture of all our apartment buildings and row houses on the side streets. And West 79th Street in particular where the building is located. And the applicant proposes to construct a new multi-story residential building with commercial space on the ground floor at the site. And the design team is here to present the proposal.
Thank you.
I'm Elise Quasbar from Pickens Quasbar. We're District Preservation Consultants on this project and joined by Morris Ajmi from Ajmi Architects, designer, and Steve Glasscock and Barbara Van Durin, who are the developers. We'd like to go through a little bit of the context and the history of the site and the appropriateness for the replacement of the existing building and the design of the new building. The site is at the edge of the historic district on 79th Street between Amsterdam and Broadway. It's right next to the Lucerne, so it's in between the Lucerne and several Clarence True apartment buildings, or rather, row houses. A little closer in, the Lucerne is here, the subject premises is right here, and then looking the other way, looking east from Broadway, Clarence True apartment buildings, sorry, row houses, and the subject premises and the Lucerne. The historic district boundary is right here, the western boundary, so this building is outside of the historic district. These buildings are in. You may hear today a little bit about the lot line wall of the Lucerne. I'd just like to point out that it's a very simple brick facade and has been painted. This is the existing building. Staff pointed out the facade was constructed in 1972. This was part of Clarence True Row originally, but in 1972, the four buildings had their facades removed, and this facade was created, they moved it out to the property line, so it sits proud of the Clarence True buildings and it's flush with the Lucerne. There's no original historic fabric of the original facade embedded in here in any way. On the backside, the rear walls were retained, but on the interior, it's a new core and the building was completely reconfigured for apartments. These are some of the details that I just mentioned, that it sits proud of the Clarence True row houses. There's some details of the storefronts, the ground floors, reconfigured to accommodate commercial. And then here's the detail of the entry. Here's a photograph from the 1960s showing the original buildings. This is the Lucerne right here. Here's the row houses. This is a 1980s tax photo of the existing building. Staff asked us to address the modern style designation, and it appears to be kind of catch-all phrase for the designation report, which is a name for buildings in the district that have very little architectural distinction, and this one is particularly efficient in architectural quality. It's noted in the original photographs, or the other photographs. These are buildings for which the district is designated, which includes the long rows of row houses on the side streets, the 1920s apartment buildings that are on the wide streets, 72nd, 79th, and 86th, the majestic and wonderful Art Deco apartment buildings along Central Park West, and the institutions that are in the district, the synagogues and churches. These are the buildings that contribute to the quality of the district. In terms of the history, or sort of broader base of the history, four buildings that were combined to the existing traveled as a group for many years as they changed hands. The Lucerne was constructed in 1903, and in 1910, George Engel, who owned another hotel in the neighborhood, bought this one, and he also bought these four buildings next door. And there's documentation that he paints that those buildings were used as an annex by the hotel and had expansion plans. In the 1920s, he bought the buildings to the north and these buildings over on 80th Street. So these buildings were actually associated with the idea of expanding the Lucerne, and throughout time, they traveled as a set, and in the 1970s, were actually unified physically. On the wide streets, we have pre-war apartment, or between the wars apartment buildings, and I think that's one of the things that we really wanted to relate to with the new design. The site that we have is 65 feet, about 66 feet wide, and most of the sites on the wide streets that have that kind of width are taller apartment buildings, not small row houses or tenement buildings. And as we saw in the earlier photograph, sometimes there are just blocks of apartment buildings, one right after the other, but in many cases, there are taller apartment buildings that are juxtaposed with smaller row houses and tenement buildings, which is a situation that is very similar to what we have on our site, the Lucerne on one side and the smaller apartment buildings on the other side. This is the way the neighborhood grew. There were smaller buildings that were replaced with taller buildings, and it wasn't a very neat and tidy system. Sometimes on the side streets with rows of row houses, yes, but on the wide streets, it's much more jungle and disparate scale. Morris will be talking about some of the specifics of the design of the new building and how it relates very specifically to its site, but we did want to note that not all of the apartment buildings were simply one straight-up facade, street wall, but that when you got into the later period, the 1930s and 40s, the buildings started to step back a little bit at the top, had corner windows, like this building on 86th or 96th Street, which sort of looks a little bit like the corner of the building that we're proposing, and setbacks sometimes had terrace balconies on them. And you see the setbacks here and here. So the form of the building that we're proposing does draw from forms that are familiar in the district. The building that we're proposing also has applied decoration, something that we see in buildings in the district, either richly colored terracotta or interestingly stacked brick, terracotta done in different patterns, vertical and horizontal on the building, and deep relief. It's something we chose to work with on the proposed building without trying to compete with the very body metric and rich terracotta on the Lucerne. So this is a view of the new building, and we'll hand it over to Morris at this point to talk about the details of the Lucerne and if you have any questions before I go.
Any questions?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Morris Ajmi from Architect for the Project. As Elise mentioned, we looked at the neighborhood and the district to draw inspiration for this building, and we tried to design a building that dealt with the transition in scale between the Lucerne and the row houses to the west of us. We paid attention to this projected bay here, as you can see here, aligning one of the base courses at that point, and as well as this cornice line on the Lucerne. So we tried to relate both at this point to the existing building and the Lucerne picking up on those two lines, and I'll show you in the details where the tattered terracotta panels are. We recessed the existing building now, reaches the height of the adjacent building. We recessed our facade back to also mitigate between the scale of the new building and the existing building. And we feel that if you look at the, these are two streetscapes, on the top looking south on 79th Street and on the lower portion looking north, you see our building here in the context of the other buildings along the street that are approximately the same height and the same on the south side of the street. Here's a close-up of the building with the two adjacent buildings, and then I'm going to take you through some of the detailing right now. And so we've blown up sections of the building, the base, the middle section, and the top, which we actually have a model, which shows the terracotta riving and the decorative panel. This is the base. As I mentioned before, we have two rows of raised ribs that run along the base of the second floor and the third floor, which align with the base of the Lucerne. We're proposing the entire building in terracotta, which is here, with a bronze tone metal and a brick for the side of the building. So the facade of the building is in terracotta.
Don't throw them, yeah?
And we wanted to propose a color which we saw throughout the district, a one that wouldn't compete with the Lucerne, which is a very strong red color. Here's a detail of the base, which shows the alignment here, the recessed portion of the building which extends up, and those ribs that align there. The residential entrance is on the west side, and this is three potential, or actually two entrances for the potential building. Here's a center section showing the recess of the balcony. We have a brick course, a soldier course that wraps around, which you can see underneath the balcony, as you can see in detail there, which extends around the entire side of that building. And the renderings there showing that, you can see those, that soldier course there, which adds some detail to the side of the west elevation.
There's a glass rail with a terracotta baguette.
So the terracotta baguettes match the terracotta of the right side of the building.
The soldier forcing is only at one level?
No, it's just that it's at the floor slab and it wraps around. Yeah, and it wraps around.
What you're showing in the working model, that's at what level?
This is the top level, which I'll show you.
So otherwise, you only get those two at the top level, that the banding appears only at the top level?
No, it runs down.
No, I'm talking about the first level.
Oh, sorry, I was going to get to that. Yeah, yeah. Well, we have the banding at these two levels, and then the entire top floor has the banding, which to create every corner of the top of the building, which, so here's a detail of the same detail as the model, which shows the ribbing for the entire top floor with the cornice, and then there's another band right below that. And then here, we have a sort of detailed section of the, or portion of one floor, which shows the grouping of the windows, which are encased in a bronze tone metal for the three windows on the side, and the two windows that need to individually sort of break down as you go west towards the balcony. And then the adjacent buildings show some of the decorative elements on those buildings, and a line drawing, and then a rendering of the terracotta panels, which would be between them.
Between all the windows or occasionally on the Lucerne?
No, on the entire facade, which I can show you.
It's hard to see.
But there's every two windows.
I guess it's long here, right?
So they're here.
Can't really see them.
What is driving the bulk of this building? Meaning, how do you conceptualize why this height is appropriate to the surrounding area?
This fits within the zoning envelope. It's actually lower than the overall zoning envelope. We matched the height of, or just below the height of the Lucerne, which creates the maximum base elevation. Sorry, the penthouse.
Okay, but the height of this is taller than the Lucerne, correct? Because with the setbacks?
Yes, that portion is, yes, which you can see.
But the base height's a little low?
It's 150. Yeah.
All right, but it's, so it's because you're looking at what the zoning allows that has driven the shape and form of, maybe not the shape, but the bulk of the building?
Yes.
Is there an argument made for the two-story penthouse within the architectural front?
Yeah, because we do see some buildings that have similar tops or treatments on the buildings.
But along West 79th Street, I don't think you do. Is that correct?
If you go back to 14, you've got the context.
You see some here.
Right, at the edge, right.
So there are cases.
But aren't those penthouses more integral to the design of the building?
That one definitely.
One on West End.
The one on West End.
One on Amsterdam on the corner there.
Right here.
What is your, what is the top of your penthouse? What is that penthouse, the penthouse portion, I guess?
This is an apartment, and that's the penthouse.
That's the what?
This is the penthouse.
Do you like that dormers in this district?
I believe so. We don't have one, but yeah.
All right, you know, I know you've talked about matching some of these lines to referencing the two buildings on either side. I just don't see how it's being, which line is being referenced from the Lucerne, given that you have all these lines coming across?
Right.
So, and these, the, right, they don't, so they don't distinguish themselves from the rest of the facade of the building, correct? They're just the same?
On our building?
Yes, on your building. So you have these, you have these horizontal lines?
Yeah. Actually, we have a ribbed pattern on those two lines. I'm sorry, these, these two lines which align with those, we have a different pattern.
Oh, I see. Okay, so those two lines are treated somewhat differently?
Different, yes. And you can see it here.
One can see it there.
Yes, so you can see it with three. Those are textured.
I see. Okay, maybe.
And you can see it here.
Until you get to here, and it's textured.
These are textured, and then that's smooth. And I think I have a, I can show you a detail. Yeah, so you can see it here. These are textured here, these are textured, and then these are smooth above, and then we have one that lines up with this course here, and then the entire top, which sort of references the decorative treatment at the top of it.
Just a question about the balconies as well. I'm sorry, you want to add to that? Because I want to talk a little bit about the balconies. I know you've showed us some photographs of buildings, some of them have corner windows and they have the setbacks, but do you really see this, do you really see balconies amongst the buildings that I think are protected and that are characteristic of the historic district? Because it just, I thought it was quite distracting.
Yeah, I think that we reference these types of corner windows and try to create something that allowed the back of the building to align with the face of the townhouses. So you do see balconies not in this configuration, but we were referencing those windows.
Right, in fact, maybe the balconies you see are sort of the more modern 60s and 70s buildings, and maybe not the buildings of the era that are, that we're referring, that you're referring to and that we would need to think about in terms of having an appropriate, appropriateness. That's maybe something you want to think about. And I would say the same thing with the penthouse and as well.
Yes, I have a couple of questions also about sort of the general, if you're drawing from elements in the district, can you just talk about sort of, you know, I'm seeing it in the context, for whatever reason, the model's sitting here, so I'm using the model as my context, right? And we see that the Lucerne is a very elaborately detailed building. It's got a lot of depth in the detailing, and then some other buildings in the district that you're using as examples have a lot of depth in the detailing, and your depth, your detailing is very shallow and subtle?
I think that might be slightly deceiving just because of the scale of the model. I think if you look at that, you can see that we've made it, you know, we've made an attempt to really create depth and shadow on the windows and the decorative elements. We projected this portion of this window frame beyond the facade, ability to create additional shadow and depth for the windows, as well as the decorative panels and the ribbed terracotta elements, so.
So you're saying like the decorative panels that the, in between the windows, that there's enough depth in the carving? What's the process for these? What is this?
Terracotta. Yes, they'd be cast terracotta.
Okay, so there's enough depth in the etching, or are they proud or are they etched?
Well, there's a frame around the panel. Should I just bring this model with me?
You need your Audi's.
Yeah, that's what we're really.
So we essentially, yeah, that's carved in, and then, and this sticks out.
How much does that stick out?
I think that's two inches, I think two inches square. And then this, the windows are set back, and then also, these are about two inches square. Chris, I can give the dimensions for you. But yeah, the idea was to create a richness and depth and detail on the facade using those panels. I think I have a couple more images. Do you want to just go through?
It's great to do that.
Okay, we have the north and east elevations, and then also, we did some view studies. On the left are the existing conditions, so looking east down Broadway on the top, and then looking south, down Broadway, 80th Street on the bottom, and then the proposed building, which you can see here and here on those. And we did a series of those, the key plan on the left, here the same.
Your party walls are brick, like the brown brick to match the terracotta?
Yes.
Regular, a regular brick?
Just a primary brick, yeah. And then we also did a drawing showing the condition at the Lucerne. So our building, this is the footprint of the building, that's the rear yard. These are the windows that will be covered up that are immediately adjacent to the building, and then there are additional windows around them, which you can see on this section as well.
Another question. The sidewall of your, sidewall of your building, it's blank, right?
Yeah, there are some windows on the side.
And, yeah, sure. Sorry, let me get on.
Yeah.
So, so why did you treat it, like why is it, why do they stop where they stop? How did you decide to treat that facade the way you did?
There's a formula for the amount of open area you could have on lot line windows. They have to be protected windows, but they're a formula, and we followed that.
Because actually, if you, if you use one hour of glass, you don't have a limitation on the amount of windows.
When you're adjacent, that's impossible.
No, one hour glass.
I thought that limitation was per floor.
And I think it is per floor, but you also have to be 60 feet, I believe.
But within the 60 feet, if your windows are one hour, there's no limitation on the glass.
If that's true.
Check that with Bob Anderson and others, yeah.
We'll double check.
Okay. But in addition, let's just say for example that there's a problem with that, but I think you really should look. But you didn't treat the side facade, I mean, you see the slab exposed and so on, isn't that more like a 60s?
That's actually a brick, that's a brick soldier course that runs around. It's your detail, it falls in.
Mm-hmm. But like, do you have some examples of side facades that are your, you know, because it's a permanent side facade?
Yeah.
No, I mean, examples in the district, yeah.
Yeah, I can show you some, but so, but here's the detail of the brick.
Okay.
And then I believe we do have some.
It's just covering up the slab. But that's just covering up the slab, you're like decorating the slab, right? As opposed to that.
Commissioners, I'd just like to say that most sidewalls in historic districts in this historic district are very blank. They have some windows, but there's not any articulation at all. If you look at the Lucerne as an example, it's just a straight wall with windows.
With a lot of windows, very animated windows.
As far as we know. But what this design is trying to do is at least animate the facade a little bit with some of the additional brick going across this.
You have some photos on 26.
Can I ask a question? Mechanically, definitely. So there's no way to hide that or drop it or not have it just throw out of, because it's about the size, the panop equipment on the top, it's about the size, it looks as your top floor, more or less.
There's an elevator overrun and then.
Yeah. So there's no way to not have that, you know, if it were smaller maybe, but then it just throws out. It seems to be almost the same size as the floor, so it's like you treat it, the second floor really nice, and then you have the hatch.
I think we could look at that, we may be able to, maybe do something with the elevator, but we'd have to location.
Okay. Are there any other questions? I will take last minute.
I have to go. You want to give me your questions? Or comments, any?
Chair, it's so nice to see you here. Congratulations. Commissioners, my name is Helen Rosenbaum. I'm the council member for the Upper West Side, District Six, which in this particular area encompassing the Central Park West Historic District. As you may know, the local community board, Community Board Seven, voted to oppose this application, and many members of the community came out in opposition as well, so let me start by stating unequivocally that I'm opposed So, let me start by stating unequivocally that I'm opposed to this application to demolish the existing building and construct a new building. This building is a part of the historic district on the Upper West Side, not because of its unique charm and detailing. Those were stripped away long ago when it was converted from a group of row houses and combined into one apartment building in the nineteen seventies, but because the existing building and the dimensions along the entire block allow for the unique qualities and characteristics that make up the historic district. Its height, in its mix with the other buildings on the block, allow for views of the distinct buildings such as the Lucerne, and allow for the air and light that makes the area so special. Architecture is not my skill set. I'm not an architect, nor do I have skills in assessing the building's structure, but I am a longtime resident of the Upper West Side. And I represent all the residents of the Upper West Side, and I have to say that I know an Upper West Side building when I see one. And this is not an Upper West Side building, and it has no place in the historic district. The terraces, the height, the coloring, the windows, the materials, the storefront area do not in any way resemble or reflect or reference what we all understand to be an Upper West Side building within the historic district. Not only is it inappropriate in appearance and height, but it will irreparably harm the unique character of the district, changing the very nature of the block and hence how the block is experienced as a whole. Gone will be the wonderful views looking east of that side of the Lucerne Hotel and its marvelous pink facade. Gone will be the light that reflects onto the row houses on Eightieth Street from the southeast, and gone will be the limited scale that we all hoped would be preserved within the historic district designation and has become so difficult to find in Manhattan. May I read the last paragraph?
Yes.
Thank you. Preservation of that sense and scale, the mix of midsize and smaller buildings allows a neighborhood to keep its integrity even as it grows and undergoes inevitable change. That is what a historic district should mean, and I do not expect that, and I'm aware that development will continue, but it, when development happens, it has to preserve the very character of the neighborhood, and this proposal does not. I urge you to reject the proposal outright as it has no place on this block. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Angelica Martinez, Martinez.
Hi, I'm Angelica Martinez, speaking on behalf of Assemblymember Linda Rosenthal. I am Assemblymember Linda Rosenthal, and I represent the sixty-seventh Assembly District, which includes the Upper West Side and parts of Clinton, Hells Kitchen in Manhattan. I am testifying today in regard to the application to the New York City Landmark Preservation Commission for a certificate of appropriateness to demolish the existing five-story apartment building with cellar and ground floor located on two oh three, two oh nine West Seventy-Nine Street, and replace it with a new sixteen-story residential building. It is important to place this proposed building in context. It will become part of the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District, spanning from Sixty-Second Street to Ninety-Sixth Street along Central Park West, which was designated in nineteen ninety. While the existing building is designated no style, it was originally part of the Clarence True Row Houses, and it contributes to the lasting identity of its individually landmarked neighbor, the Hotel Lucerne. The nature and scope of the proposed construction will alter the essential character of this lot and will mark another change in the historical architecture that is intrinsic to the Upper West Side. I am extremely concerned over several aspects of the proposed application, including the proposed color treatment, the scale and bulk of the building, the impropriety of the planned recessed balconies on the southwest corner of the building, and the glass and an elemental ground floor retail space. Approving this application would run counterintuitive to a historical likeness of similar historically designated buildings in the affected neighborhood. While the proposed building is lovely, by no means does it achieve the architectural or design grandeur that is characteristic of the surrounding historic district, and will in fact detract from the existing aesthetics. In addition, I have significant concerns regarding the impact that the proposed building will have on the adjacent Clarence True Row Houses, and especially the Lucerne, a treasured individual landmark built in nineteen oh four, which recently underwent a multimillion-dollar renovation. If constructed, the proposed building will fully aboot the west-facing wall of the Lucerne and will eliminate all the lot line windows that now exist above the fifth floor on the southern portion of the west facade. This runs contrary to the intent of the nineteen ninety Landmark Commission's decision to preserve the Lucerne distinctive qualities because they represent a hallmark of the Upper West Side that is widely known and treasured. I stand with the current residents of two oh three, two oh nine West Seventy-Nine Street, neighbors, preservation advocates, and Manhattan Community Board Seven in opposition to the proposal as constituted. I urge LPC to deny the applicant's proposal and require the application to heed the recommendations set forth by resolution of the Preservation Committee and Community Board Seven in Manhattan. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Withers. Robert Withers.
My name is Robert Withers. I reside at two zero two West Eighteenth Street. Since we're limited to discussing the aesthetics and design of this project and how it may fit or be unfit in the historic district, let me present a few pictures. I'll have to use words since I don't have the option to project images on the screen. These are perspectives and snapshots you can see from the south-facing windows of apartments like mine and others between Amsterdam Avenue and Broadway on Eightieth Street. These vistas have existed for a hundred years since the building of the Lucerne Hotel for scores of families and residents of this block. I've been enjoying them since nineteen seventy-six. From your south-facing windows, you see the sky over Manhattan framed on the left by the pinkish brick Lucerne with its cornices and west-facing windows. You see the ground-level gardening and back terraces of two oh three to nine West Seventy-Ninth and other low-rise buildings of the street. There's ivy on the brick, there are pots of flowers, twenty-foot-high rosebushes and trees, a coolness in the summer. Children play at the ground level, and residents enjoy the air light and sky on the terraces. Dubs and pigeons flutter on the bay rooftops. The sky changes daily, bright blue and empty, drifting white clouds that cross west to east, dark scudding cloud banks, summer snow, summer storms, all kinds of weather, rain and lightning, hard and soft winter snow, a sky awash with dark and light. A bright moon crosses from east to west at night, waning, waxing full, rising above the cityscape. Shafts of sunlight fall into our kitchen and bedroom windows and onto the street in mid-days and afternoons. This is a common heritage of our historical district, an urban landscape and aesthetic that's been enjoyed by generations. What's proposed? A massive sixteen-story tower that pretends to imitate the grace of the neighborhood and fails in its ersatz gracelessness. A massive brick wall of a building to replace the historic hundred-year-old vistas. Twenty-five apartments, whose presence will destroy the neighborhood aesthetic experience that many times that many families and residents have enjoyed for years and that countless more enjoy as they stroll the streets. The sky, the sun, and the moon would be walled off by this proposed massive structure. Is two oh seven West Seventy-Ninth an attractive historic building? Not particularly, but its destruction and replacement by this massively out-of-proportion proposition would destroy more than a building. It would destroy forever the historic aesthetic vistas and sense of scale of our neighborhood and this unique urban landscape. I urge the commission to reject this proposal. There are no tweaks that would fix it.
Thank you. Robin Green. Robin Green.
My name is Robin Green, and I'm a lifelong resident of Seventy-Nine Street between Amsterdam and Columbus. I feel that this building would just stick out like a sore thumb. It is, completely destroys the, the line of the buildings as it is. It'll totally mess up the view of the app, I'm sorry, the Lucerne, which is a treasured landmark of that block, besides the fact that it is a landmark district. It will destroy the color and rhythm of the block and just ruin the whole block area. Thank you. I, I beg you to, to disprove this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Hillary Kaufman, and after that will be Chris Wright and Douglas Brookman.
My name is Hillary Kaufman. I'm the owner of two eleven West Seventy-Nine Street, which is the house, which is the building that butts the proposed new building. The proposed new building, the lower southwest balconies intrude on the windows at two eleven West Seventy-Nine Street, affecting the privacy of my tenants. The balconies and mass of the proposed building are inconsistent with the architecture of the block on both sides of the street. While the property being considered for demolition has no historic features, it is consistent in height and non-glitzy tone of the historic buildings on that block. The nonhistoric features of the proposed building take a nonhistoric building to its, that it is replacing to a high, to a much higher level of being nonhistoric. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Wright?
Chris Wright, good morning, members of the commission. Congratulations, Chair. I, I will speak on behalf of the Lucerne. The next man is also from the Lucerne Hotel. I will speak for both of us. I might need a few seconds of his time, but I think three minutes would be almost enough, if I may. Congratulations, Chairman. My name is Chris Wright. I'm a zoning lawyer from Simons Wright, and I represent the Hotel Lucerne. The Upper West Side Historic District juts out to protect this particular block, protect Seventy-Nine Street between Amsterdam and Broadway. It's the westernmost edge of the historic district and includes the row houses and the Lucerne Hotel. It's a special exception was made to capture this specific block. At, at the Community Board hearing, the applicant made a statement they didn't repeat today, which I will repeat. They said, "If the two oh three facade was not destroyed, this application would not be here." And we agree with that. If the facade of two oh three West Seventy-Ninth had not been destroyed in the seventies, before it was landmarked, this application would not be here. Then the next logic by the applicant is because the facade was destroyed before it could be protected, the next step is to build a sixteen-story building. We disagree with that logic. We think there's a leap of faith, we don't think it's correct, and we think it's inconsistent with the historic district. We think the historic district has two important elements on this particular block. It's a huge district, but on Seventy-Nine Street between Broadway and Amsterdam, there's two important elements. There's a facade design of all the row houses and the Lucerne Hotel, and there's the scale. We think the scale of the row houses is part of what's important on this block. And the applicant has conveniently jettisoned that concept, and has simply said, "Because we lost the facade, there is no more constraints on this, on this building." We do not agree with that. Another loose term that the applicant used at the Community Board, less so today, was that the building is as, the proposed building is as of right. As a zoning lawyer for twenty-five years, I don't believe there's an as-of-right project in a landmark district. I think all landmark, all applications in landmark are not as-of-right and must be, and are discretionary approvals. So, and then, I want to then talk about, I mean, imagine if any other row house in that street was destroyed, the next step would be a sixteen-story building for any other reason, for fire or weather. And then I want to talk quickly about the Lucerne Hotel, the western wall. We think the western wall of the Lucerne Hotel is an important part of this historic block. It is the original brick tone, pink facade, the detail. It has been dismissed by the applicant today, to some degree, and at the Community Board as lot line windows and nothing more. I'm a zoning lawyer. I understand lot line windows are not protected in as-of-right districts and as-of-right projects. But this, as I said, is our lot line windows in an as, I just need another minute, please, and I'll be done. These are lot line windows on a historic building in a historic district, and we think they should be protected. I'm quite certain, if I was sitting in front of this commission, by an application by the Lucerne Hotel to skin over the western wall of the Lucerne Hotel, similar to what they're proposing here, I'm certain that application, in my experience, would be denied. This is the same thing here. Therefore, I believe this application must be denied. And the last thing I want to say, and then I'm done, is the applicant bought the Lucerne Hotel, my client, rather, bought the Lucerne Hotel, right when it became landmark, early nineties, has spent a significant amount of money complying with the landmarks law, maintaining the facade. That is the risk you take when you buy in a landmark district. That is the risk that this applicant is trying to jettison. I ask you to please protect the Lucerne Hotel and this street. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Douglas, Douglas Brookman, are you, is Douglas Brookman speaking?
Yes, he is.
Okay, all right. Kelly Carroll?
Kelly Carroll, Historic District Council. HDC would like to applaud the use of terracotta on this new building, but we feel that the potential of this material is not being completely realized. We remind the commission about the sophisticated all-terracotta new construction at five twenty-nine Broadway, which plays on the material's strengths as both decorative and a nod to a historic district. HDC urges the commission to consider a setback starting at the fifth floor to preserve the scale of the existing streetscape and not compete with the incomparable Lucerne next door. The proposed balconies emit an uncomfortable relationship to the historic row houses. The committee wonders if this balcony feature could be moved to the rear of the building as there is not a precedent for street-fronting balconies on West Seventy-Ninth Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Max, Max Gueston?
Max Gueston, Landmark West. The present building's front facade, altered in the seventies, does not contribute to the character of the district. This present proposal is for a sixteen-story, one hundred and seventy-four-foot building between the Hotel Lucerne to the east and the remaining eight Clarence True five-story row houses to the west. The site poses scale and alignment challenges. For the record, it is only the zoning code that allows for a building of this height and bulk, and the LPC's mission is to consider the relationship between the proposal and the architectural features of the neighboring buildings. The new building's height and massing would overwhelm the Lucerne and lessen its prominent impact in the corner of West Seventy-Nine Street. Since there is such a dramatic shift from the one hundred and fifty-eight-foot hotel and fifty-five-foot row houses, what is required here is not a one hundred and seventy-four-foot building, but a lower one that serves as a kind of buffer to make a smoother transition between the two building heights. The weakest part of this design is the point at which the building meets the houses to its west. Those houses, which originally had projecting pavilions at each end, now terminate in a shallow bow facade set back from the building line. The proposal makes a half-hearted attempt to recognize this condition with balconies and an open corner on the top eleven stories and a differentiated facade on the bottom three. The balconies continue from the third to fifth floor where the house's facade is flush and projects to the property line on the bottom three floors where the house's facade is bowed. These bottom five floors lack sensitivity to their neighboring building and fail to make any real attempt to accommodate its design. This is particularly important, as this is where the building will be experienced by the pedestrian and where it will have the most impact. To solve this, the westernmost base should be recessed to be flush with the Clarence True facades. A related issue is that the residential and retail facades are not differentiated unlike the floors above. Modification here would help resolve this issue. The two penthouse floors read as separate from the principal facade and hence work, but their materials should be dissimilar from the principal facade below, thus emphasizing its termination. Traditionally, lot line windows are designed to disappear when an adjacent building is constructed, and hence they are not designed at all. We should recognize the great opportunity at this landmark site to create a wall design that will be permanently visible. Even given the difficult code restrictions, this aspect should be developed. Our committee believes the project should be reevaluated. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig T. Hurd?
My name is Craig Hurd. I live at one thirty-five West Seventy-Nine Street. I've been there since nineteen seventy-eight.
Can't hear.
Sorry?
Can't hear you speaking to the mic.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. I've been, I've been in the neighborhood since nineteen seventy-eight. I know what. I know what an historic district looks like, and it doesn't look like that. This is a building which more appropriately belongs on East End Avenue. It's not, it's not a building in our neighborhood. You know, it's a very emotional thing to see your neighborhood destroyed. And this is what this type of building does. It affects us. It affects our neighbors. And it's not, it's not something that I don't think we ever envisioned on the street or can envision, or want to come to grips with. If you look at those balconies, they're horrible. They're, they're domino chips sticking out of the facade of the building. It's a scar on our neighborhood. It's a scar on our neighbors. It's a scar on the West Side. Thank you.
Thank you. Gina Higginbotham, Oliver Merrill, and then Judith Calamandre. Gina Higginbotham? Oh, you, okay, all right. Oliver Merrill? Okay. Let me just note that Gina Higginbotham is vote, she's recommending against the proposal. So is Oliver Merrill. Judith Calamandre?
Hello. My name is Judith Calamandre. I live, as a matter of fact, right on Seventy-Ninth and Amsterdam, diagonally across the street from the proposed building. My building on Seventy-Ninth Street is a building of no architectural significance. It has one thing going for it, which is that it's the same twenty-story height line as the entire block. The whole block is harmonious because of that. It has that, those two features in, together with what the four brown buildings have now. It is the same height as the cream-colored, as a matter of fact, quite beautiful brown, cream-colored buildings are. And it, it is, if anyone, excuse me, I have to interject. If anyone would take the time to look at the four or five buildings to the west, the cream-colored, they have medallions under the roof. They have a lot of beautiful detail. The photographs that the builder has shown us, and I do find it rather insulting, of Central Park West and of the great buildings and churches there, do not relate to this modern building. This modern building belongs in Soho or Tribeca. It simply doesn't fit here. Moreover, there is collateral damage. Don't we care? Let people live in the building? Don't we care that the stores already there are part of the stability of the neighborhood? They are not yogurt shops, which will disappear in two weeks. They are not like the stores around the corner, the Art of the Perfect Shade. Where are the hardware stores? Where are the shoe repair stores? They're all gone. And I can't believe that the builder walked around this neighborhood and said, "Oh, there's a building in need of aesthetic repair." I submit, what the building builder saw walking around was that within three blocks, there are three, four, and if I had a minute to think about it, maybe five, new luxury condominium buildings. And maybe that's what the builder saw. Here's something that nobody will defend, but we do defend it.
Thank you. Misha Hunter, and then Mark Diller.
Good afternoon. Misha Hunter, I'm speaking on behalf of Elizabeth Caputo, the president of Community Board Seven, and particularly... Sure. Is that better? Okay. And, and also for the co-chairs of the Preservation Committee for Community Board Seven, for which I am a member, and unfortunately, they could not attend today. I will not read the entirety of the testimony and resolution that is presented before you. However, I would like to summarize a few of the key issues and profound concerns that we have about this proposal. Primarily, we felt that the critical path issue of the large-scale enassing of this building appears to be more emulating a corner block site rather than a mid-block site. Certainly, typically, in historic districts on the Upper West Side, the condition of the corner buildings is taller, and the mid-block buildings are lower scale. On the north side of this block, on Seventy-Ninth Street, the scale is very low consistently, except for the Lucerne at the corner site. So we were very concerned about that. Certainly, the detail and ornamentation presented also areas of profound concern because of the shallowness of the detail of the new building versus the rich sculptural, romanesque revival-style detail, particularly of the Clarence True rowhouses, as well as to the Lucerne, immediately to the east. We also were concerned about the method in which the architect treated the transition between their facade and then the low-scale Clarence True rowhouses immediately to the west. In addition, the very large scale of the retail at the ground floor, which might be more familiar to those walking on Broadway, but not necessarily on a side street in a mid-block on the Upper West Side, which has more typically pedestrian scale, smaller scale for the retail. And lastly, we're concerned about the shallowness and the minimization of the planar shifts between the facade and the fenestration in particular. And we would have encouraged more deeply recessed glazing. And we do appreciate the time, and again, congratulations to you on your appointment.
Thank you. Mark Diller, and then Wally F. Leth and Sam Leth.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mark Diller. I'm also a member of Community Board Seven and its Preservation and Steering Committees. My colleague, Misha Hunter, has just heard, delivered the testimony on behalf of CB Seven, and I would like to amplify just a couple of points in the spirit of adding without repeating. And in particular, I'd like to focus on the impact of the proposed building on the Lucerne. And I am not affiliated with the Lucerne, so I'm speaking just on behalf of the community aspect of that. And the scale to which Misha and many other speakers have adverted has a very material impact on the understanding and appreciation of the Lucerne, especially of its west facade. We would argue that the west facade is not just a utilitarian wall, but rather a complement to the sculptural elements that are found on its facade, as well as the more playful, somewhat sculptural elements on the Clarence True rowhouses as well. I think the best evidence of that is that the color of those, of the Lucerne's details, the window, the things that look like a Juliet balcony underneath the windows on the Lucerne, the color seems to echo, if not match, that on the west wall. And there's even a seam where the two colors interplay. And so appreciation of that wall requires some modulation of the scale of the building. Exactly what that modulation is, our committee was a little divided upon, but certainly, that is a consideration that has not been taken into account in the proposed building, and we believe it should be. We also believe that, that the west wall and the appreciation of the Lucerne itself is not an afterthought, and replacing the, what is now, all really one need do is compare the west wall of the Lucerne with the west wall of the proposed building, and ask yourself whether one is an appropriate substitute for the other in a historic district. One of the things that we mentioned, and there was significant testimony about and also discussion at the community board, was the fact that this is the farthest west that this historic district extends. And we believe that there's a reason for that. And that the reason was to preserve not just the Lucerne, which is already an individual landmark anyway, but to preserve its context. And that context means scale, and that scale is not appreciated in the proposed design. So for those reasons, those are further amplifications of why the community board's, Preservation Committee recommends disapproval of the project before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Wally Leth?
I've heard a lot of, can you hear me? Yes. I've heard a lot of very interesting, important reasons for disapproval of this project, most, most all of which I agree with myself. But I'd like to speak to something a little bit different from the discussions of the historic district that have preceded me. I do appreciate the beauty of some of the buildings that were individually mentioned, such as, of course, the Lucerne, the Ansonia, the Apthor. Upper West Side Historic District has some excellent examples of very beautiful and ornate architecture. But the historic, but these are protected already. The historic district exists for reasons besides individual architectural worth of individual building. It has to do with the nature of the neighborhood. People have spoken about the beauty of this block and the integrity of this block, but actually, I think it's been short-circuited. This is a very significant, important axis in the historic district of the Upper West Side. The axis begins at the river, at the Rotunda, where there was a very beautiful fountain, WPA project, which unfortunately has been mostly dismantled and disguised by a commercial restaurant at this point. And it proceeds eastward along Seventy-Ninth Street. You have the beautiful church on the corner of Broadway and Seventy-Ninth Street. It's a replica of a, of an Italian baroque church. You have, of course, the Apthor. You have the block in question with the beautiful townhouses by Clarence True and crowned by the Lucerne. And when, then you continue along the block between Amsterdam and Columbus, all the way to the American Museum of Natural History, a landmark in its own right. When people in this district get off the subway station or go down to the river and they look eastward, they see the Western Wall of the Lucerne. It anchors them, and they see something very beautiful. They don't see the ornate design on the side facing the street, but it's an anchor. This street has integrity. A sixteen-story building next to the Lucerne would rob an entire axis of the district of the integrity for which it was designed. I urge you, please, to disapprove this project. We don't want it. We don't need it, and we shouldn't have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Leth?
My name is Sam Leth, and I was a past president of West Seventy-Ninth Street Block Association. We were very much, we were very much involved with the landmarking of Mount Nebo synagogue in the eighties. And in the course of that landmarking, historic information came out. Like Marvin Hamlish was bar mitzvahed there, that Eric Siegel was bar mitzvahed there, and that there were very important things that were involved in that particular building, as well as in the block, and blocks. To just speak of the block between Amsterdam and Broadway is to deny the reality of our historic district, which, the way I see it, the spine, our district is the spine, and the museum is the head, and it goes all the way down to the river with Central Park on the other end. It's very important to see the historic district. And I would say this, not as an amateur. I'm a student of Margaret Mead. She was my advisor. And I have studied with people who represent the best of historic anthropology. So a lot of people come here and they speak as experts in architecture. I'm coming here and I speak as an expert in culture and in culture history. And I can tell you that this particular block has a huge amount of culture history, from the park to the river, and you shouldn't forget it. And I believe that ultimately, that's why this particular historic district puts the underlying, under basis of this historic district, the Upper West Side. Please reject this totally inappropriate building. Thank you.
Are there any more speakers? Are there any more speakers on this item? No more speakers. We did receive a letter from Manhattan Borough President, and she expressed several objections to the proposed building, and I'm just going to note what they are, including the color of the materials, the lack of architectural transition to the existing townhouses to the west, the complete blocking of the easterly wall of Lucerne Hotel, the design of the retail entrances, the scale and bulk of the building, the height of the penthouses, and the inclusion of the terraces on the southwest corner. And she agreed with Community Board Seven's expressed concerns. All right. Would the development team, our design team, want to address any concerns? Yes, please come forward, of course. Maybe we can ask questions as well at this point, given that we've heard testimony. I know Fred, you wanted, you wanted to...
I want to go ahead.
Okay, okay, all right.
We've heard a lot of testimony today, and we'll try to just deal with the major issues. And I'm sure you have some questions that we're happy to answer. But I think the first and most important one, the themes that were coming out of the testimony had to do with scale, and I want to add, scale diversity. And they, there's testimony that says that the district was extended through the Seventy-Ninth Street block to pick up the Clarence True townhouses. And that makes a lot of sense, that it seems to be the case, because it stops at the end. But it doesn't necessarily mean that the existing building that we're talking about was recognized as part of that quality. We think that the wide streets of the district, like Seventy-Second, Seventy-Seven, Seventy-Nine, and Eighty-Six, have large-scale buildings on them, and the diversity of scale. And we pointed this out earlier, but I'll spend a little bit more time with it, that the streets were developed with lower buildings, and those lower buildings were then replaced with taller buildings. Yes, we did say that we had a set of Clarence True buildings today that wouldn't be here with this application. We are proposing a building that fits within the development history of the historic district, particularly on the wide streets, and we are adjacent to a taller building, to therefore feel that it's an appropriate application here. And along Seventy-Ninth Street, within the historic district, there are blocks of taller apartment buildings. So from a scale perspective, this building fits within the general scale of the apartment building types. And because it's in... of the apartments building types. And because it's in labor, in conjunction with other buildings of the same type in the district that contribute to the district, we feel that that is an appropriate solution in this situation. And there are many, many places where you have townhouses adjacent to apartment buildings.
Here.
Exactly, on the other side. So we think that that is an appropriate addition in terms of scale and general type building. With regard to design, you know, we think that we've put something forward that is credible. Some people were asking for more decorations, some people for less. We felt we didn't want to compete with these two historic buildings. This is fairly restrained, but does have some decorative qualities. I think we probably would like to hear some more from the commissioners that we can start to respond to some of those design issues. Are there any?
Are there any other questions?
Yeah.
Just have a question about, okay, so I understand the idea of replacing small lots. You assemble, they become larger buildings. But there's such a variety in heights. And I know this, we know that zoning is driving this height, but zoning, contemporary zoning wasn't driving those heights. Some, a different kind of zoning was driving those heights. So I'm curious about how that height was, was determined as compared to all those other choices. Like, there's a lot of choices.
Right. Morris may want to amplify this, but with regard to the street wall, we felt that it had a relationship with the existing Lucerne building. And the setback on the top is something that you see in other street wall buildings further down. It may be one or, you know, one with some mechanical on it. But we felt that since we were providing a new building, new building type contemporary architecture, that there was some flexibility in terms of its height and we're at least exploring the possibility of its exact height and.
One thing, and I just want to piggyback on what, what I think Marjorie raised, is that there are, there's a lot of variations in the height. And I went and walked along West Seventy-Ninth Street this weekend to sort of get a sense of the scale. And I would say that definitely as you move from, from the Museum of Natural History towards the west, the first several, I think two blocks are very solidly developed and also with a lot of tall buildings. And then they have intermittent few smaller buildings. If you look at the streetscapes that you've shown over here, there's a lot of variation. And I think that you could have a taller building here, but not necessarily the same height as you've proposed. So it seems to me that it is, to some degree, maybe maximizing what your development potential is. But I think if one took a step back and looked at the fact that you can have a variety of taller buildings and then think about what is the appropriate height, appropriate height in the context of the Lucerne, which, you know, this building, you can match it, but I think you want to give some deference to it, given that it's at the corner. And I think you want to make sure that that remains prominent. And I am concerned because I think that your building doesn't quite do that. And so you could have a taller building with a taller street wall, but it's something that transitions between the Lucerne and the lower scale. And maybe that's a more appropriate response. Yes.
I don't disagree with that and I want to amplify it a minute. But I wanted to speak about, just give my thoughts about, the first and most important thing here is can the existing building on the site be demolished? And this is a very slippery slope and a very interesting issue. And, and I think each one of these cases has to be looked at carefully one by one. I know in my own historic district, Brooklyn Heights, there are a number of buildings that even before designation in nineteen sixty-five had been stripped of much of their, if not all of their character, much of it. But some of it was still there. And miraculously, in a few cases, in one case that just was completed last year, a reconstruction from stoop to all of its glorious original facade was completed. And it sort of showed us in that historic district, don't give up on the buildings that are, all buildings that are no style or have become no style. But in this case, the original building was destroyed. It's not any, anywhere there. It's destroyed and gone and the street wall has been brought out any number of feet to the property line. So to me, that's a, that's a very different case. And I think it's important to look at those kinds of differential, differential elements when we make these characteristic decisions that we must make about whether an existing building in a historic district can come down. So in this case, I believe that the case has been made, that this building can come down and a new building be, be built. I know others, particularly many who spoke today would disagree with that, with that comment. But I think others who did comment were, were accepting that some new building might be there. But I just wanted to say that part. Now, a few comments and I'm sure others will have other thoughts about the building. I, I think what our chair just said, that the, that the height of the building, overall height is, is too high. And I think she made a very astute observation of West Seventy-Ninth Street to the east and the relatively high, wall-to-wall, high building context that this, that there is there, but not a wall. It's not Park Avenue. It's a, it's a differentiating series of, of buildings. So I think the critical importance of the Lucerne is, is so profound that this building must, must make much greater deference to it. And therefore, I think from a bulk point of view, has to come, to come down. The, the other aspect of the original sin, let's say in nineteen seventy-two, of the destruction of the front facade of the true brownstone row houses, was that it was brought out to the street, a streetscape issue entirely. And if you look closely at some of the renderings, particularly, well, the, on thirteen, for instance, but the existing building does this too. I mean, it started, the original sin started to do this in nineteen seventy-two. And that is a very mean-spirited juxtaposition of, of that building to the beautiful curved nature of the bow element of the, of the, of the remaining true facades. And I just think that juxtaposition, which is so mean now, and, and actually is, is pretty mean in the proposed plan right now, should be looked at much more carefully and maybe even set back. Maybe there's a subtle setback right there that maybe transitions more closely as it comes closer maybe to the street wall at, at, at the Lucerne wall and a, and a more interesting base of the building because the base is important. And I think Morris has done an interesting job of trying to relate those two things. But I think it could be more interesting and more responsive to the, to the building next door. As has been stated, and I'm sure others will state, I think the balconies just have no place here. But the corner, demarcation of that corner has every reason to make a statement there. It just shouldn't be done with open balconies that you see in sixties and seventies buildings. And again, the penthouse, I think, it becomes somewhat irrelevant as, as my thoughts about lowering the building somewhat. It doesn't have to be massively lowered. I mean, I'm not looking for halfway between the two. But I think it just needs to defer at least a floor below the Lucerne. So with those comments, I'll give up my.
Yes. Yeah, I'll speak about things in kind of no particular order because I wrote notes. I guess the, the first thing is I, I agree that there, there sort of doesn't seem to be a why there for the exact height, that there's a variegation in height on, on the images that were shown and that's, that's characteristic of the block. And this isn't, isn't responding to that. So height needs to be driven from something as opposed to the hundred fifty feet that zoning says. The, the next is kind of, there's lots of images here that show, you know, the wealth of the elements on the block on that page eleven, where it shows five West Eighty-Six and three twenty Central Park West, that gorgeous Ardecco building that has ribbing. And, but each one of them deals, for example, with great strength on the corners, even though the corner gets whittled away by a corner window. The balcony absolutely does not do that. It sort of disappears the corner. And if you look at all the examples on these wide streets, the edges of the building are strong. They really hold on. They don't fall apart at the balcony. If anything, the place for some kind of balcony type thing would be the visual expression in the center, which you see as like, for instance, there are those little, I don't know if you call them really Juliet balconies, but kind of those attached balconies on the Lucerne, that kind of thing, where the balcony becomes a really decorative element that's part of kind of the mass of masonry building. And I, I think the balconies are really kind of wrecking it. So, and then the other thing that I think is kind of interesting and you should be looking at is the sort of the character of the street when, which is typical of a lot of places where there are tall apartment buildings next to smaller buildings. There's often a space, little alleys, things like that. And in terms of deference to the rowhouses, maybe formally there's a way, because I, I agree with Fred, that it's kind of smashing up against that corner. And then you see that odd corner thing that really just is not an urban, a desirable urban phenomenon. You actually have an opportunity to make reference to that classic space between on the street wall, which kind of in old days led to funny alleys and things like that. But there's other ways of dealing with it that maybe means that you set that, a portion of that facade back. And, but you, and you, then the building reads as a, as a block with strong corners, but there's a setback next to that that addresses the townhouses, something like that. The next part of it is the penthouse. I think, yes, there are funny little rooftop things here and there. But again, your great examples of these buildings where all of the setbacks are integral to the character of the building and give the building enormous strength as it rises. And for one, you're not forbidden from doing setbacks. I don't think it's a mandatory hundred fifty-foot street wall. So you could start to degrade the building with setbacks and that would resolve it on the corner because really you, the corner is not resolved. And the other part of it is like that great one at three twenty Central Park West, or actually all of these, they're built, they're three D buildings. They're not just a one D building, which is, this is like, or let's say a two D building. But they're three D buildings. You have an opportunity to kind of wrap around and really take advantage of the fact that you're a revealed facade. And instead, the facade is just neglected on the side. And I, I think it's completely not okay to, to neglect the facade. There's lots of examples of decoration here where it's serious decoration, not a little bit of a sad banding. And then, so, and in terms of that, where the, where the terracing is an opportunity to formally turn the corner, deal with, deal with the side facade, it's also an opportunity to, to deal with these penthouse things. Because in every case, the penthouses are totally a part of the composition. And they use something that's equivalent to the dormer rule in order to rise all the way up to, along the street wall and then kind of set back gradually in an extremely elegant way that complied with zoning at the time. And I, I think, really think that needs to happen. That in terms of the.
The only thing I would say, and just turn from the penthouse, is that you could have a solution here which has no penthouses, which have no setbacks. And I don't think that would take away from
Right.
the building form at all.
Right.
In fact, it almost feels like you want to have, you want to have a straight street up, a straight, a street wall building and have no penthouse and just have your mechanicals or your water towers or something and.
But these are examples
Yes.
of beautiful penthouses.
They are.
And so I just think this building just plunks them on top like it's an afterthought.
I totally agree.
And that's why it's not, it's decidedly unbeautiful.
Right.
And then, progress stepping, oh, and then there, I think Elise made a comment about the building being restrained because it wants the adjoining much better buildings or down the street better buildings to reveal. I think there's, forgive me Fred, there's a difference between restraint and being bland. And, and so I, I think that the detailing is, the detailing is so restrained and so subdued that it's barely recognizable. And maybe that's part of the problem with the rendering or you didn't bring us in a panel to show us what that really is going to look like. But when you compare it to the wealth of detail that you see on the other buildings, it's just kind of a gesture. And we, we've seen in so many other projects, particularly in Soho where, or in NoHo, where the detailing is very extreme with the terracotta casting. It's got huge depth to it and really lives. And this is not, not really living.
Okay. You saw the comments, yes?
I agree with a lot of the comments. And I first want to, you know, echo Commissioner of Lands about the, the building itself, the original building that we really do not have in this case, a building of great character. And so I can support the demolition. At the same time, I also agree with many comments. First of all, the rooftop addition, the height issue generally. I do think that if there is a rooftop addition, a penthouse, it should just be one floor. I, the, the mechanicals need to be dealt with in a different way. And yes, it could be instead just integrated. It wouldn't have to be an addition, but if it's an addition, it should take some more cue from other historic buildings in the district perhaps in the way that's done. I do, I like actually the materials and color. There was some comment by some of the presenters about, I actually like it. I think it's subtle. But I think that that contributes in this case, because the colors are subtle, to making the definition of the details a less, a little less apparent, which we're all concerned about. I think they do need to, the decorative details, and I think the direction is good on those, should be more, more developed. There should be more shadow, more depth, more definition. And I think that, that should go further than it's gone already. I also agree completely that the balcony does not work in this case and something else needs to be, happen on that corner, a very strong corner. At the same time, having said all of this, we've got a great landmark, the Lucerne next door, and it shouldn't compete with that. Obviously, it should complement it.
Okay.
Okay, so part of not competing with Lucerne next door, I think, is the height. And for me, I think it needs to be, the height really has to be the same or lower. It can't, I can't see how it could successfully be higher. I think that the height or, the height as is shown in the model would have worked if that was the corner building and the Lucerne was on the other side. But if we're working with what's there now, even though we know that things can change, you really have to take your cue in terms of height of the building that's next to you, especially since that is the corner building. And because it is more prominent and because you do want to respect your neighbor in some ways. And so I think that it could be flat, it could not, you know, it could be a building just as easily without any of the setbacks that we have there for the, the townhouses. But I especially thought that, that and the mechanic equipment room was sort of like trying to just stuff it all in and to have, and the fact that the floors in terms of the scale looks smaller is because you wanted to do more floors. And so I think it, it maybe needs to relax a little and to not try to maybe be as big as it is. Maybe it cannot be. I don't think it can be as big as it is shown there. In terms of the down lower, I think that there's really not a too successful meeting in terms of the bottom with the townhouses next door. And people have already spoken about some things that could happen, that it could pull away or it could set back or something. But somehow it needs to not only recognize the tall building on the corner, but it needs to recognize its neighbor on the other side. And I think that there are ways architecturally to do that. And so those things should be explored. And, and just in terms of the base, And just in terms of the base, although we were shown that there are some differentiations between different floors and things, I think it isn't enough, and I think it doesn't really, I think it's going to read the way it reads from here, looking at where I can see what's on the Lucerne, but I can't see anything on this building. So I think that there needs to be some accentuation in terms of base, or whatever levels you want to show, but a little bit bolder than what's there. And we've already talked about balconies, which I also agree don't work there. And I think that the sidewall needs more punctuation. And, you know, not only, sometimes we do say that sidewall should just be a sidewall, and it's utilitarian, and it's not important. But I think there are times, and we've seen those times too, where sidewall has a little bit more importance, and I think that this is one of them. And one of the reasons is because what we're taking away is a view that, I mean, although it's not, you know, overly decorative, it does represent a building that had some symmetry, some, something, and to, I think, to replace it with something that's less than that is not a good thing. So those are my comments.
Okay. All right. I'll try and give an overview of the comments that we've made, and I'm sure the applicants would like to come back and respond. I just want to go back to what Fred talked about, as well as Diana, about the existing building and its demolition. And I think it's good for the record for us to understand what this means if we agree with the demolition. So there's things on surface, it's clear that this building was sort of mutilated, and what we have right now is nothing that I think anybody expected to preserve in the historic district. But it's worthwhile to look at other, perhaps, these so-called modern structures in the historic district that can be distinguished from this one. I think you should make a case why this one in particular, compared to maybe other modern buildings that have found themselves within the historic district, those may be worth saving, but this one definitely needs to be demolished. Does that make sense? It means kind of surveying maybe some of the other buildings, not the historic ones from 1920s and 30s, but the ones from, you know, basically the 70s, if there's anything that's within the historic district that's been identified by a designation report in a particular way. And even if they are similar to this, I think we should just be aware of what this means for us to proceed with allowing the demolition. Yes, you can answer the question now, yes.
I think what you're asking for is that we come back, which is clear we don't, that you would like us to look at some of those other apartment buildings, or, sorry, rowhouses that were combined in the same year. So we can verify...
Right. And I don't think they necessarily need to be this particular situation, where you had pre-existing rowhouses that were combined, but other buildings that may have been identified as modern or a different class of style, that is not really what the historic district intended to preserve.
We're happy to look at it's a broad range.
Okay, all right. And just in terms of the design itself, because once one gets through that threshold, we start talking about what is the right response in terms of development of the site. I think it's clear that we've, I think all the commissioners have raised a concern about the bulk, the height, the penthouses, and what that means vis-à-vis the Lucerne, but also, how does that reflect the varied scale of taller and shorter buildings along West Seventy-Ninth Street? We've talked about the balconies and the fact that doesn't, I think the corner should be strong, and I think all of us believe that those balconies really do not do that. We've talked about the transition to the lower-scale buildings, which I think, I think a couple of commissioners raised an interesting way on the possibilities of treating that architecturally, to respond to that, where you don't, in fact, have the protrusion coming up against a curved wall. So I think you can take a look at that. Let me see what else was there. I think these are sort of the big areas, and I think, again, the, if I forget something, you'd like me to know, but I think the other issue is just about the treatment of the building itself in terms of providing recesses or depth that, at least at this point, I think some of the commissioners feel has not been enriched enough. And it's an interesting design to, I don't know, question for you, which is, how do you create a building that can reflect some of those features, but at the same time, not overpower the Lucerne? Are there other things that we have raised? Yes, please, and then Marjorie.
I want to say one more thing about this demolition of existing buildings in historic districts. I mean, this is a serious business, and rests on precedent and all the rest of it. But if the commission is based on one word, it would be the word appropriate. I say this all around town all the time, and what a wonderful and subjective word this is. It's whatever six people around this table agree it means at any one day or year. It's sort of a magically fabulous word to have the whole commission based on. But I would say if there's one word that should define us as individuals, or a characteristic that defines us, it would be discernment. And we're supposed to be able to discern from our various backgrounds when we see what's appropriate, and when we see something that's not appropriate. And often, that's going to be a, perhaps, a very fine line in a building that's been stripped, how much of it's been stripped, you know? In this case, it's gone. It was torn down and thrown away, and another building put up in its place. That's, to me, the discernment aspect of this. But I would be very, very careful to tear down a building, or allow a building to be torn down, that still has original elements in place. And I think that's part of this discernment issue that is so important for us.
Anything else to add, or? Okay.
We've already said so.
Okay, all right. So we'll bring you back, and we can close the hearing. Yes, I know. All in favor? Anybody opposed? No, okay. Thank you.